Good evening, Livonia. We will start tonight's regular meeting with the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance offered by Mr. Donavick.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick. Welcome, everyone. Excuse me, welcome everyone to the 1,943rd regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting, and the meeting minutes of this meeting will be approved on the Monday, May 2nd, regular meeting agenda. Ms. Nash, will you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
Vice President Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present. So we will note that the only member of the council who's not here tonight is Ms. McIntyre. She's unfortunately held up with some professional obligations and sends her best. Can I have a motion for the April 4th meeting minutes? That's the 1,942nd regular meeting of the city council.
Support.
Motion to approve by Toy, support by Donavick. Anybody have anything to say to comment on the council? Any public comment on the meeting minutes? I see none for either. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote on that?
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The meeting minutes pass from April 4th. We'll go to the council. Does anybody in the council? Oh, excuse me, actually, we don't have any special recognitions or anything at this time. So we'll go to audience communication. We have Mr. Bearinghouse here from the Greenleaf Commission. Mr. Bearinghouse, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, President Jolly, and good evening, everyone. I'm here with Greenleaf Commission members Betsy Calhoun and Mike Chesterkin as well. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to inform you of an upcoming event that the Greenleaf Commission has. This Saturday, April 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., the Greenleaf Commission, along with the Great Lakes Renewable Energy Association, as well as Madonna University, will be hosting our first Renewable Energy and Sustainable Living Fair. And the purpose of this fair is really begin educating the Livonia community on solar energy systems. We're going to have a workshop conducted by the Great Lakes Renewable Energy Association on solar power, the benefits of solar power, and the process for installing residential solar power as well. In addition to that, and this was really at a suggestion made by Councilmember McCullough, that the community should look at having like a sustainable fair or a sustainable housing fair. So we looked deeper into that suggestion, and this was one of the results of it. So in addition to the workshop that we'll have on solar energy, we'll also have 11 exhibitors there that offer not only sustainable services but sustainable goods as well. So it'll give the Livonia residents an opportunity to learn about these services and make an even greater impact on the environment. Some of the exhibitors that we'll have there will be DTE Energy, Friends of the Rouge, GFL, we'll have Greener Method Cleaning present at the event as well, Midtown Composting, which deals in household food composting as well, MI Rain Barrel, we'll have the Livonia Building Inspection Department there to answer any questions regarding solar energy ordinances and permitting, things like that. Livonia Civic Center Library will be present to introduce their new seed library, as well as the Greenleaf Commission will be there. And we'll have a local solar installer, Spark Building and Energy, available as an exhibitor at the event as well. So again, this Saturday, 10:00 a.m., Madonna University. Hope you can all drop by and learn about solar energy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for the efforts of the Greenleaf Commission in total. It's well appreciated by our community. Does anybody else want to address the council during audience communication? I see none, so audience communication will be closed at this time. We'll go to council announcements. Anybody from the council like to make an announcement at this time? Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, President Jolly. Greenleaf, thank you so much. Honestly, I know we met, it felt like many months ago, I think it was. I've been seeing it on social media. I plan on blasting it myself. It looks like a, you know, and this is going to be our first, correct?
Yes, correct.
And so honestly, if you have people in the community that are out there that just even want to learn, no experience is necessary. There's a lot to learn. It's almost a sponge mode to come out and see all the cool things that can not only save energy but help reduce our carbon footprint. So awesome job, and looking forward to seeing you guys this Saturday.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the council? I'll take a moment for a personal announcement. I'd like to wish my daughter Claire a happy ninth birthday. Claire is probably the best dancer in Livonia, from my perspective anyways. We're very proud of you, Claire, and you make us proud every day. Claire is still, we ask her every year what she wants to be for, you know, when she grows up, and every year it's a baby doctor. This has been a consistent theme, so we're hoping that works out so she doesn't have to be a lawyer.
[laughing]
So at this point in time, I will welcome our department heads who are up here with us to help this evening. We have Todd Zalinsik, our city engineer, Paul Bernier, our city attorney, Ms. Nash, our city clerk. We have Mr. Mark Taramina, our city economic development director and planner, Ms. Sarah Kasparitz, our city council office manager, keeper, director, boss. And we also have some city department heads out there as well. We have Jacob Rushlow from DPW. So at this time, we will go to the agenda for this evening. We have a relatively short agenda for the regular meeting, but if you want more, you can stick around for the study meeting, and that might take all night. So first here, we have reports from the mayor and other city officials. We have a communication from the Department of Finance dated March 23rd of 2022, forwarding various financial statements from the City of Livonia for the month ending in December 31, 2021. We also have a communication from the Department of Finance dated March 29th, 2022, forwarding various financial statements to the City of Livonia for the month ending in January 31, 2022. Those are both just receiving files. At this time, we will go to the scheduled agenda for this meeting. First up is the consent agenda. This is items 1 through 4. These items were previously studied at the study meeting on April 4th and found to require no additional study, and were placed on the consent agenda to be voted on at one time. This does not mean that they are any less important, but rather that they require no additional study. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move of approval.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Barr, support by Mr. McCullough. Anybody from the audience like to address this matter, the consent agenda? I see none. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The consent agenda passes. We will move on to the unfinished business portion of the agenda. Item number 5 is a roll call. A proposed amendment to the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended from the Department of Law. Petition 2022-01-06, submitted by the City of Livonia Planning Commission as amended to consider multiple revisions to the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance in order to correct certain defects, add and delete provisions, and provide clarification to others. A first reading was given by this council, by Councilman McCullough, on April 4th of 2022. Can I get a second reading?
Offering a second reading.
Second reading has been offered by Mr. McCullough. Does anybody on the council have any announcements? No comments? No? Any audience communication in regards to item number 5? I see none. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item 5 passes. Item number 6, the council has received an administrative response to Council Resolution 37-20. That's from the Office of Government Affairs regarding local government response to climate change. I'll note that we received a letter from the city administration detailing some of the efforts in regards to the items that were made, you know, items, well, some of the efforts of the city council in regards to climate change. So at this time, that requires no vote by the council to receive that matter. Does the council have any wish to make any other motions at this time regarding that? Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to offer or make a resolution for a report and recommendation from administration. I'm going to keep it very high level to refer any report recommendation on green building and/or sustainable ordinances and/or policies that may be out there that we can incorporate into our City of Livonia going forward. There's a, through the Michigan Municipality League...
Mr. McCullough, you need a second for that motion.
Sorry. Thank you.
We have a motion by Mr. McCullough. We have support from Ms. Toy. Mr. McCullough, would you like to explain your motion?
Yes, thank you. The Michigan Municipality League has a challenge that goes through, it's a statewide challenge through, challenge through basically cities and townships, and it's a measure on how sustainable through green metrics. And some of the items, I know Livonia, we've done that in the past. I think we've hit silver. When I was in Novi, we did that, and then obviously my present job at Northville Township, we're doing the same. What it kind of equates to, and again, the report and recommendation is for the green building and sustainable ordinance and/or policy, but some of the items that are listed into this checklist, and I won't go into too many, but one of them could be adopting policies that require EV infrastructure and EV-ready infrastructure in any new private development or significant redevelopment in the city. Another is create incentives and/or provide educational resources for existing commercial property owners to add EV infrastructure to existing parking facilities. Another one is adopt policies and/or ordinances that support renewable energy projects on private property. Examples are solar, wind, renewable energy overlay zones, and expedited permitting. And the last one that popped up is an adopt a policy and/or ordinance that encourages or incentivizes green infrastructure and low-impact design in private development and construction projects. These are just items that are listed that certain communities that achieve gold status do on a daily basis, and I think obviously Livonia is a, pretty much a built-out community, but we can do our best to redevelop in a sustainable and lower our carbon footprint. I do think that reading the administrative response was just kind of the tip of the iceberg. I think we're checking some boxes, but I think we could do a lot more, and what I'm asking for is more of policy slash an ordinance that we can enact, and obviously maybe even partner with Greenleaf on this. We also could pair this with the current tree ordinance that is in the works and going slowly but still in the works, so appreciate the second, and that's the message behind it. Thank you.
Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate Mr. McCullough's words and sentiment on this. I do support the encouragement of using sustainable products and working with private and public partnerships to make sure that we are good stewards of our environment and do what we can to leave a clean footprint in our country. However, I am not okay with requiring private businesses to adapt policies. It's okay to encourage private businesses to adapt renewable projects or policies in green, but at the same time, I think we have to be careful as a local body of government to require such levels that can be very rigorous and maybe just financially not possible for our businesses. But I like the idea of encouraging businesses and working within their budget. A lot of small businesses in our community cannot afford EV charging stations and the cost of tens, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, et cetera, but I do love the idea, and I hope that we can move forward as a community doing renewable sources of energy and working to improve our environment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Toy?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I agree with what my last colleague was also saying. I know in our small business, we had people recycle even their vases, bring them to us so that kept that out of the, you know, the landfills and things like that, and refocused those for folks, and that was a very successful program. So if you ever need a vase, I have plenty of them. And I just wanted to add to the Sustainability Committee, they've done a superior job for this community, and this started way back when, Crepe, when I was in high school, we did an environmental center and buried the combustible engine over there where Neah Hazel Park is, believe it or not. But no, I don't remember when Lincoln was shot, but I'm just, I just wanted to focus you in that the environmental stuff has been around, and Councilman Kritzman at the time really put a shot in the arm on the sustainability and gave it new breath again. And these folks have worked long and hard, have never asked for a raise, and I'm just very proud of them all. On that committee, I was able to attend a couple of their meetings, and they were able to attend a few of our meetings with Councilman McCullough and Councilman, let's see, what's your name again? Donavick. I'm teasing you, but anyhow, and they enlightened us into so many things where the idea popped up from, as was alluded to tonight, by Councilman McCullough to have this virtual event. So I applaud you on that, and that will open a lot of people's eyes to what is going on, and even the recycling piece that we looked at the carts. Many people have asked us about the recycling and how we're going to further promote reuse, reusing, and you can't turn on a TV program today without seeing something in regards to reusing and refocusing because a lot of these young people now, a lot younger than me, by the way, have learned in school how to reuse and recycle, and I think that fits in with your tree stuff, Brett, and others as well, that we begin to look at that as a community, and I know that we were always very conscious of that. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to applaud them and the committee and everybody else in Livonia that's doing their part.
Thank you, Ms. Toy.
Yes, sir, and I'm not running for anything.
Like I said, thank you, Ms. Toy. Seeing no additional comments from the council.
Sir, you're at the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. I'll tell you, you got two minutes to speak in regards to this motion.
My name is Brent Sabo. I live at 14587 Blue Sky Street. Good evening. Tonight I'll be sharing a letter that I wrote in response to the administration's response to climate change issues. Dear Mayor Brosnan and Ms. Thomas, thank you for taking the time to summarize the many actions Livonia is taking in response to climate change issues. I am pleased that the administration is committed to decreasing Livonia's carbon footprint. Unfortunately, Livonia's residents are experiencing the effects of climate change already, and so what can we do to cope with it? The best means forward for Livonia in a climate change world is an abundant tree canopy. Climate change is causing more extreme weather events like heavy rainstorms and record-high temperatures. Mature trees intercept large volumes of storm water runoff, reducing flood damage and the impact on the Rouge River watershed. Trees lower both surface and air temperatures by providing shade and through transpiration, thus reducing heat-related health risks and lowering energy usage. The Environmental Protection Agency reports that shaded areas can be up to 20 to 45 degrees cooler than areas lacking shade. In Livonia, we need to stop depleting our tree canopy for unnecessary reasons. We need to stop removing healthy, mature, city right-of-way trees for road repairs. We need to start replenishing Livonia's tree canopy by replanting all right-of-ways where trees have previously been removed for road repairs. Finally, we need to change the unsustainable road repair program, especially as taxpayers are soon being asked to fund another 10 years of the road millage. Annually, for the past nearly 20 years, the road repair program has cut down large quantities of healthy, mature, right-of-way trees. In 2021 alone, over 100 healthy, mature trees were destroyed for road repair projects. The right-of-ways where trees have been removed are not necessarily replanted later since the city allows homeowners to opt out of the replacement tree. A city tree...
Thank you, Mr. Sabo. You've reached your two minutes.
Thank you.
Very much.
I'd like to request an additional minute and 30 seconds, please.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavick?
I'd like to offer approving to give the resident a minute and 30 seconds additional time.
Support.
Okay, is there any objection from the council? Okay, you have an additional minute and 30 seconds.
Thank you. A city tree inventory conducted by the Davy Tree Company in the year 2000 for Livonia counted 6,913 right-of-way sites missing a tree. Today, according to the city, there are approximately 8,500 right-of-way sites missing a tree. We have more vacant right-of-way sites today than there were before the road repair program began. Furthermore, right-of-ways where large-size-species trees are removed are often replanted with small- or medium-size-species trees, which do not contribute as significantly to the overall canopy. While residents of Livonia can be proud that their city is taking action to reduce its carbon footprint, we are already experiencing the effects of climate change. The road repair program has been a detriment to Livonia's tree canopy and therefore a failure for climate change preparedness. As we are living with a climate crisis, we need now, more than ever, an abundant tree canopy throughout the city. I'm requesting the administration to put a stop to the removal of healthy, mature trees and begin the process of replanting all vacant right-of-ways. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. If there is no additional audience communication in regards to this item, Ms. Nash, will you take the vote in regards to Mr. McCullough's motion?
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
I would like to clarify what exactly we're voting on. Are we voting on Councilman McCullough's motion, or are we voting on Councilman Donavick's?
The extension of time?
No, no, not the extension of time, as far as what exactly, are we voting on what he has recommended?
We only have one motion on the table.
McCullough's.
McCullough's motion is the only motion on the table.
Okay.
He's asking the city administration to dive deeper in regards to the certain items that he mentioned.
Okay. Nay.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The motion carries. That request will be sent to the city administration. Item number 7 is a request to approve an amendment to amend the contract with Simple Green Recycling from the Department of Public Works, specifically to modify the program from collecting weekly, regular curbside to scheduled pickup for residents. Can I have a motion on that?
All for approving.
Support.
Approving from McCullough, support from Toy. Anyone on the council like to address this matter? I see none. Any audience communication in regards to this matter? I see none. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Jolly?
No. The motion passes. We'll move on to item number 8. Request to schedule a closed committee of the whole meeting, coming to us from the Department of Law for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and attorney-client privileged communications with respect to the Pars Group Inc. et al. v. City of Livonia. Can I have a motion in regards to this?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Motion by Toy, support by Donavick. Any council communication? I see none. Any audience communication? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The motion passes. That concludes our scheduled agenda for this evening. I will go back to council announcements. Anybody from the council have an announcement to make? I see none. Any audience communication? If you have communication you'd like to address with us, please come to the podium. If you are on the study agenda, that meeting will start at 8 o'clock.
Hi there. I don't know if this has anything to do with the number 7, what I'm going to talk about.
Well, sir, tell me your name and address, please.
I'm Bob Clancy. I live on 17786 Country Club in Livonia.
Okay.
Okay, I do a lot of walking to Livonia. I've been a resident since '88, actually, was born and raised back in Detroit, but 1950 is my birthdate, so we know what Livonia started. But I've been reading a couple of things on the Laverne, I mean, Levan-Curtis website about the city looking like a pigpen, and I have to agree with them. I do a lot of walking, and this trash, which is really caused by the recycle bins being open, and climate change with so many more windy days. The other day, I was going down Sixth Mile in the Burton-Howell sub, 65 mile-an-hour winds, and that trash was just going right down Sixth Mile, right into Farmington, newspapers, all kinds of garbage. I walked past many waterway sheds, like where the credit union is for the Rouge River, and there's trash down in those things. It's unbelievable. Nobody's going to pick it up. We don't have enough people to clean the city. And I go by the freeway, the fence that's on the freeway on 96, just plastered with garbage. Where's it coming from? It's got to be coming from those recycle bins. I've seen a recycle guy come by my house on a windy day, pick up the bin, and as soon as he's picking it up, the stuff is going that way, it's going under his truck. Does he make any attempt to pick it up? None. So it's all over. And then yesterday, that's why I'm here, because yesterday I was really ticked off because I got somebody's junk stuff. I live on the Commons, so behind me is all open. I picked up somebody's garbage from the recycle bin on Curtis, it runs the other way, into the Commons. The Commons is bags, all kinds of stuff blowing, and this stuff is blowing right into my shrubbery along my deck. You know, I'm picking up people's stuff, and everybody in our neighborhoods is fed up with it. And at the end of our street on Country Club, we have Curtis, and that's the park right there, and that's just full of garbage. Wind blows that way, right into the park. So I suggest maybe 75 bucks a person, buy the can, and over a year or two, get reimbursed because if it's a 32-gallon can, we could put it up every other week. We don't have to put it up every week. Some of these people have a half a bin, 65 mile-an-hour winds sucks out every garbage, every milk carton out of the thing, every loose paper in it. It makes no sense. Get a 32-gallon can. My daughter in Northville has 64 because they got a three-car garage, they could put it in. Most people in Livonia, no garage, small garage. 32, acceptable. And I think we could go to every other week, save money, pass the money back, reimburse the people for buying the cans.
Thank you, sir.
And we could clean up the city, because there's no way it's going to get cleaned up the way it is right now.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer a report and recommendation from the administration to explain who is responsible for cleaning up our major roadways within the city and also our major roadways and freeways along 96 and 275. To the gentleman, I too, like many of my colleagues, probably get emails and correspondence from residents.
Mr. Donavick, are you making a motion?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. President.
We need a support for the motion.
I'll support.
Thank you.
Support from Donavick.
Mr. President.
Motion by Donavick, support by McCullough. Go ahead.
Thank you. And residents have reached out complaining about the trash, and I too have seen the trash along our freeways, up along the fence line, and it is frustrating to see that, and it is disheartening. I believe that that's the county responsibility, and the city doesn't have that responsibility, but I'd like to know how we can maybe partner with the county or the state officials, or maybe there is some responsibility there from our DPW. I'm not sure, and I think a lot of residents would like to know that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Barr?
It's so funny, first of all, thanks to the resident for coming out. It's funny this came up tonight, because I keep a list of just items that come to mind that at the appropriate time to bring up. Sometimes I bring them right away, sometimes they sit on that list for a while, but literally just in the last week, I included on there the trash along the expressways in particular, as Councilman Donavick referred to, and appreciate his motion. I was just going to ask tonight, but it's probably appropriate just to do it the way just to do it the way he's done it, because I think the people are probably in the best position to answer that question, aren't here. But I, one, just one thought I'll share publicly that, that went through my mind, you know, we have this Livonia Service Corps. I, I can understand the liability and the safety concerns about people going and cleaning up along the freeways. But, you know, to Mr. Donavick's point about some kind of partnership is, is, I have a feeling that if we were to organize an event with the appropriate safety precautions, even if it was temporarily, you know, on a rolling basis shutting down a lane to provide the buffer, you could get residents out there to pick, pick that up. I think it could be a community event. And I do think that even though it might not be the community's fault that all that collects out there, I'm a big believer in the broken window theory, and you keep things clean, and it discourages more trash from going there. As far as what the resident said about stuff in the neighborhoods, I mean, granted, 65-degree winds is definitely an anomaly, but I, there's, there, there's no substitute for just residents taking personal responsibility for packing their recycle bin appropriately. I mean, I, my kids hear the speech from me every week about make sure everything's below the lip of the bins and nothing blows out. And I, I just don't believe that from a residential perspective, there's anything we can do that would substitute for that. But along the expressways, I, I absolutely want to see some creative ideas for that, because there's an issue out there. So, thanks.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Toy?
Thank you so much. The expressways, I believe, are in the jurisdiction of the state of Michigan. I, I'm not sure what legalities fall in there, so perhaps the administration can dive into that a bit more. Our probation department within the 16th District Court has those lovely folks that have gotten, I don't know what, what is the claims, Jim? I'm, I'm not remembering. Is it a civil or whatever?
I believe they were sentenced to the work program.
The work program, that's it. The work program. I know my dad was involved in that, not as a participant, but as a director of that, and many years ago. And I think they're still out there picking up trash, week in and week out, on Saturdays. And they do various other things in the community, which is a huge asset. So I think Councilman Barr's idea is a good one. But we do have some ongoing things going on, probably not enough. But certainly, there is some effort being put forward in that regard. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any audience communication in regards to the motion? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The motion passes. We will look forward to that recommendation from the, recommendation and information from the administration. Any other audience communication? I see none. I will entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Barr, support by Toy. No objections from the council. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The meeting is adjourned. We will be back at 8 o'clock for the study agenda, and it's going to be a long one. So get some food and water and prepare.